I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First we have the approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda of September 17, 2019, regular meeting as presented. Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have public participation. Have any? Next we have the report of the superintendent.
Good evening. Oh, it looks like my slides started bouncing around. Sorry about that. Let me take them in. Okay. Thank goodness Nancy is here. Okay, here we go. So, yeah. So the first item that I have tonight, you should have some notes of appreciation in your packets. Yeah, I'm really not sure what's going on. Is that fly doing this, Nancy?
Yeah.
You were right, we've had that before.
It's pretty sensitive.
Oh my gosh.
One more reason to not like flies.
Alright, I'm glad we figured that out. Losing my words. So, notes of appreciation in your packets. Next, on the report of the superintendent, I'm actually gonna turn it over to Mrs. Toomes, Nancy Toomes. She is going to do an update and talk about technology.
Do you have it?
Yes, I do. She thinks this is you. There you go. Okay. There you go.
So this is our annual update. Alright, our mission is to provide an infrastructure of technology so our students can have a safe place to learn, provide the tools so that the teacher can conduct their classes and incorporate technology, and provide professional development that's timely. And then of course, living within a budget that our awesome administration gives us. So our infrastructure, we have a backbone that we have to maintain every year. We did some upgrading over the summer. We do that every summer. We did get a new firewall and we have more bandwidth. We were peaking our bandwidth out at about 80%. So we went ahead and we upgraded to a 2G backbone. And that also required us to get a new firewall. We still have our content filtering, which is our secret filter in our Go Guardian. And we're trying to keep our students safe while they're also on the internet. Not only do we provide that through internet and our devices, but we also maintain the door and card readers and video surveillance. And we make upgrades to those pretty much annually. We also store our backup offsite for our critical systems. So this year we do rotate our Chromebooks out every year in certain areas. So this year we bought all of two through four new Chromebooks. And we now have touchscreens K-12 for our Chromebooks. And our new Chromebooks are also in the hands of our teachers. We still have the Nexus tablets down in kindergarten and first grade and various iPads floating around the district. And we have projection devices in every room and in any place necessary as requested, we try and put those where we can. We run smart boards, Prometians, tablets, etc. for input as needed or requested. Oh, software, we have lots of software we maintain. We do, our textbooks are online with the Google Classroom, we have Google Classroom. We still maintain Moodle. And we have other learning management systems that the teachers are using. We don't really specialize on one. Whatever they're most comfortable with is what we let them use. They use those. We do support the video broadcasting crew. And we upgrade their system as necessary. We also help maintain the library media center with support and upgrades as she requests those here in the high school and as Ms. Uden does in the elementaries. We have addition of hardware and software that enhances her teaching and learning processes in those areas. We have a new visitor management system this year called Identikid. It also has the ability to integrate with Power School, so it'll also help with attendance tracking. It also makes sure that visitors that come to the building are safe to be around our children. We also have a new system called Power School, special programs for our Fed Department. Our fly is making a run here. I'm getting too far ahead now. Alright, we still have our Destiny and our Overdrive for the library. They're also linking into some audiobooks services for our students that would benefit from that service. We still have Google Apps for Education. United Streaming and Discrevior Education, we still maintain that video online service. And we still have Safari Montage, which is another online video service and is specifically geared towards education. And we can also upload our own videos to that system. Alright, we still maintain emails, so our goal for use communication tools and we have email for each teacher and student. We still use G Suite, which has a host of other communication tools, Google Classroom. We do a lot of shared docs, spreadsheets and presentations. And videos, of course, through Google. We have access to other tools. We've also been hitting social media really hard with our App to G system. It incorporates a website, our social media accounts and our school app. We also have the push notification, the calling system and the texting system, which all goes through App to G. We still maintain Power School for our parents. We have an integrated online payment system with that now. And we have a, we're trying to keep pushing forward on our ecollect system, which is integrated in Power School for online registration. We also have announcements and videos on TVs in every school and most of these are student-run now, which is really nice. We also have our video creation groups in the middle school and in the elementary schools. And Dr. Smith still has this DLP group. Alright, so we still have our SNAP software, which is the nursing system. We maintain our accounting software. Within our accounting software, we have the web link system, which allows our employees to get online and see their checkstubs. We have an inventory system where we track all the technology. And we have Casio, which is a computer monitoring software. We also have all of our online archives through FileBound. And we have a new system called Frontline Absence Management, which is a subcalling system, which our teachers and our staff will utilize. We're still maintaining kid account in our elementary here in town. And we have alumni and sports records online. Alright. So now we have PD and we're still maintaining our events program. We're in our second year for the cohort that we started last year. It's a lot of hands-on instruction where we help the teachers integrate technology. And those teachers can receive college credit through Missouri Baptist. We're also pursuing some other college online class opportunities through MOBAP for this year. And as a tech department, we attended the MoTech Talk over the summer. And we'll be attending MoreNet Conference here in a couple of weeks. And we are members of the International Society for Technology Education. The tech budget, we get a number from Dr. Fleege and it is supported by the awesome people of St. John County and our administration. And we work to keep it within our means. And we do get some grants here and there to help supplement. And we try and help our teachers get what they need to run their classrooms. But we always have to keep our mind to the future for what's next and how to stay on budget. There's always something next. Okay, any questions?
No, it's amazing.
Yeah, it's pretty busy in our area.
I remember just sharing with new teachers out there, we're all telling how long you've been on school board. I said, "I've been on eight years." I don't think there's anything that we were using eight years ago, we're probably using today with technology.
Power School.
Really?
We're on our 13th year of that, it's made a lot of changes.
With the phones, everything's been upgraded, you know, everything. It's amazing how things do change.
And another eight years, it'll probably all change again.
I've heard compliments this year on the website, too, some of the changes.
Yeah, we really like that, that's really a neat service. Been very pleased with App to G. See, what else, anyone with questions?
Well, and I'm gonna throw in, Nancy talked about grants, but really Nancy goes after those technology grants. And she gets a lot for us on those, so she works hard for those grants, so.
Thank you.
It is a big deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And while I go ahead and transition, there was one thing that I kinda missed, because I noticed I had two things back in one fell swoop. Since Dr. Mercer's here, I think it's important that we recognize him. He was chosen as the Southeast Middle School Superintendent of the Year, so. Alright, Southeast Principal of the Year. He could be the superintendent if he wants to.
Since we're public and on the record, I want to say that it's not about me, it's never been about me. We are just surrounded by good people that help bring that sort of spotlight to our district. And so I'm more than happy to share that award with everybody that makes St. John Middle School look good.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Taylor. I have those two things backwards, so I apologize for that. And I'll let him talk about the Professional Development Day on August 30.
In your packet, you'll see the Professional Development Day agenda. Overall, I think it went pretty well. We had everything from mentoring, leader in me training, communications presentations. Aurora Fowler came over from the hospital, did a presentation on CBD oil and the dangers associated with that. Some technology training, some breakout sessions. One of the highlights was the Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force that came in and spoke. Those guys did a fantastic job and just reminded us about what's out there on the internet and what our kids are facing when they have that downtime where they're not supervised and how to address that with students. So those guys did a fantastic job. Once again, Kristy Clark did Alice and updated some of her teachers on Alice training. I'd like to thank Dr. Brad Robinson for coming in and doing a trauma session. He did a couple breakout sessions on trauma. We had good feedback from that and, you know, students come to your classrooms with all kinds of different baggage with them and that trauma seems to be the one that impacts them the most and that nags at them the most and it's so hard to get rid of. So he did a presentation on that to help us out. We did a Building Your PLN presentation, Ms. Crystal Kanek. I'd like to thank her for hosting that. And that's just about growing your professional learning network on Twitter and connecting, kind of what Adam Welkum was talking about at our Back to School Professional Development Day. We had a Coding for Beginners session with Justin Roth and Amy Rowland. They did a fantastic job. And basically, I walked down and I got to see a little bit of it and all I wanted them to do was to get our teachers to get in there and to just throw them in. Same thing you do with students in your class with coding, is that right, Amy? You just throw them in and let them go. And then that's what they were doing. And at first, it seemed rather difficult for teachers who are used to structure and tell me what to do and I'll get it done. But once they understood how to begin, then they started running with it, just like the kids do. So I wanted them to offer that session to show them that you just have to get in there and do it. And it's not, we tend to be afraid of it as adults, rather than to just get in and start digging in and getting it done. We had an unplugged session. Ms. Louise Robertson hosted that one. She was getting a little ribbing from her colleagues. She wanted to bring them in and have them put their phones and tablets in a bin and just sit down and interact with one another without any technology. And I attended the second one, it was a fantastic session. People really opened up and, you know, we have wonderful people here, but we don't always have the time to share with one another our experiences and our background. And that's what that session was about. I think we built some strong relationships in that session. And then we had a couple special education sessions hosted by Jamie Drury and Jenny Clare. So overall, I think it was a good day. I did put a survey out, it closed on Friday. We will be reviewing the Back to School Professional Development Survey and the Professional Development Survey from this Professional Development Day as well with the Professional Development Committee. And hopefully developing, we have a September 25 half-day coming up, another half-day in February, and then a full day in March. So we're going to work on planning those moving forward. But overall, I think it was pretty successful. And thank you, if you were able to count myself several of you there. You got some good information out of that.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Taylor. I will turn it over to the building principals and they're going to do their principal reports. For the first time this school year.
Yes. Mrs. Zussman, I'm gonna shake it up and I'm gonna go first this year. Um, Jordita.
I'm trying.
Okay.
I have a fly.
Our friend. Right up there by the name.
Okay. Now it's your turn.
I can't remember if this is over. Well, good evening, everybody. And as always, it's great to be here. And Mrs. Zussman and I collaborated a little bit because we always seem to have some similar things, so we tried not to make repetitive slides. So I'm gonna begin tonight with this opening slide that kind of summarizes lots of things that have happened in the last five weeks. So you may recall last spring, our PLC leadership team at the elementary were working on two big goals. One was, we got input from faculty and parents and the students and we came up with our new mission statement, Learning and Leading Together at St. John Elementary. So one of our big projects was, as a leadership team, we bought everyone, the children, the faculty, the cooks, the bus drivers. We got new shirts, our spirit shirts, and so the children and the staff wear them on usually Fridays, but we do have Inspirational Shirt Day on Tuesday and sometimes we see them on Tuesday. So these little gals kind of represent that big piece of work that we did. And with that, Learning and Leading, Mrs. Zussman has a nice slide on our staff collaborating on August 30. We had our fourth big Leader in Me Empowering Instruction Day. And the focus of that day is that exactly, empowering instruction, you know, building deep trust behaviors and implementing best instructional practices in our classrooms. And our teachers are working together to go in and observe each other and give each other feedback, which definitely takes trust behaviors. And work on giving each other feedback and they each picked a goal of one instructional strategy they are really gonna try to find tune this year. So together, we're doing that with our students this year, so. Okay, another kind of a cool thing we did in our building this year was every hallway in grade level picked a phrase, "Be a something." And they filled in the blank. And our early childhood and preschool team, so I'll kind of go through them each month that we get together, but they picked "be a kid." And there they all are together. And that's our team downstairs and we have a new face in there. Mrs. Darush is new and Ashley Kreider is new, so we actually have two new faces in there. And so I just snapped a couple of pictures of some of the kids down there doing, we're gonna talk about DOT Day in a little bit, but there's lots of learning in being a kid down there. They do a great job. So another focus, a really awesome opportunity, we got to build some teamwork with our community, was the Relay of Voices. That was a few weeks ago. Sandra Cabbott reached out to me and shared all about the Relay Voices with me. So there's a group of athletes and artists and performers that are starting at the headwaters of Minnesota and traveling all the way down to the Gulf of Mexico. And you might see our guests on the right there, Victoria Bradford and her husband. I believe his name was Tom, Thomas, and Sandra is there. And she invited us to come do something and she was pretty open about what we did. So we talked a while and we settled in on our first graders. We'd come down and sing a song of welcome. And so Lacey Bowman composed a cute little song of welcome. And then they sang, "This land is your land and this land is my land." And then Sarah's ice cream treated us all with that ice cream, little ice cream treats. So we wanted to thank Sarah, thank Sarah for that. So it was just a great opportunity for our children to get a slice of history and meet someone who has big goals like that and share a little time together. So we were thankful that Sandra reached out to us. And then Grandparents Week. So wow, last week we had Grandparents Week and we had about, I meant to look up the number, but a solid 300-plus grandparents in. And it went really great. It was a good opportunity for us to try out our Identikid system with large numbers. And we had some front-loading and a lot of help from Jason Bowman, but we had it up and rolling and it went well. And we did, you know, we put some special things into place, like having an extra station in the gym and some things like that. But it went well and overall, grandparents were like, "We didn't mind waiting. We're glad that you're safe and keeping our grandkids safe." And so we kind of had them sing on the beaches and, "Oh, they got CPR Day, they got CPE." There was all that stuff going on. They seemed to like it and the cooks made delicious lunches every day and we had a wonderful Grandparents Week, so. A couple of really great things going on with our kids. For the beginning of the year, we already have had multiple positive office referrals. And those more often than not are about kids befriending somebody. It's like they meet a friend at that moment. They have compassion and a kindness that lets them see someone could use a friend. So we see up there, Lucas Steve, Maybree Chokers, Alaya Katz, Vera Rutler, Reese Pecut, Mason Bennett, Olivia Beckerman, Trenton Lacy, Carrington Williams, bah-oh, Destiny Vaughn, and Barrett Kreidler. And so those kids, like I said, did something extremely kind or often returned something that's lost. We've had several kids find money and rather than pocket it, turn it in. So we're gonna give a shout out to those kids. And then last Friday, I had a really big honor. We've had a handful of fourth graders who their teachers just felt like had exemplary behavior. They hadn't lost any dojo points, they'd been going above and beyond. So I got to have lunch with this group of fourth graders here. Colby Shane, Lila, Cadence, Josh, Gabby, and Hallie. So that was a treat and it was a fun time. Alright, so last Friday was International Duck Day. There's a great book called The Dot by Peter Reynolds. And our building did a building-wide collaborative effort. The key phrases that we embraced that day was just make a mark and see where it takes you. And every single grade level was assigned a color. And we are making a big collaborative mural across from our library on that long wall with the windows. It overlooks the playground, so it should be up in a few weeks and be here in the building, come by and look at it. Every class read the book, did interactive art paintings. And all the dots are gonna form a really great mural. So we had a great day with that book. And it was Friday the 13th and we, and it folded and it resulted. Alright, thank you.
We've had a really busy September at Blue Hill, so I couldn't possibly talk about all the things we've done, but I put a lot of pictures in this slide, or all my slides. Our theme is leadership and our motto is building leaders in everyone. And we came up with that last year and we're proud of that. And that's what we try to do every single day. I put, this is Addison Martin, she was our very first positive office referral and it was like on day two, because she was very helpful to new students. She was chilling around the classroom and helping them out, but she's been there a while. We've had several office referrals, like we had two students that helped clean up at the football game. We've had students that were helpful in Dragon's Den. We had students that helped plan new student welcomes. So I just didn't list all of them, we've had a lot of positive office referrals. Okay, again about the leader in me training. Thank you for letting us do that because we're unique, because we're so far apart. We don't really get to talk to each other that much. But we do have to plan together and be on the same page. So we got to work on trust behaviors and we got to work on instructional strategies and methods. And the teachers are using that for their PD plan for this year. We had our new student welcome, which Ms. Rowland planned with, was it our lighthouse team? We have a student lighthouse team and they helped plan the whole thing. They did a scavenger hunt and we had lots of people come out and help. I think Dr. Taylor and Dr. Fleege and I think Dr. Green and Bailey came out and Kristy Clark and Stephanie Gett came out and helped. And they were walking kids around the building, they were on a scavenger hunt and they had donuts and it was really good. They helped equip their lead role for first quarter. They introduced them to all the important people in the building, like the secretaries and the nurse and showed them all our little secret hidden spots, like our courtyard and our outdoor classroom, so they know where all that stuff is now. This slide was, at the top is our Back to School PTO Bash. And I was a little concerned because it was day six of school and we had a really gung-ho billboard this year. And they brought that to me and I was like, "Hey, I think we can do it." And they did and it was awesome. I bet we had probably over 500 people there and out throughout the night. We had a big bounce house, we had face painting, we had the big games outside. We had Girl Scouts there, the county health department there. It was a really good turnout and everybody had fun and we kind of had to tell them, "Okay, it's over." And then down at the bottom, I wanted to brag on Christina Gilbert because she went to a workshop over the summer and she is setting up her classroom differently. She's still teaching the same curriculum, but it's called TAB and it's called Teaching Artistic Behavior. Because an artist doesn't sit down and you say, "Here, you're doing this weaving," and they create. She's letting them have different studios where they create whatever they want to create that day. But she's graving it on participation and productivity and how they grow the next time they come to our class. So I was very proud of her for doing that in her classroom. It takes a lot of classroom management, a lot of supplies. She sends out emails about, "I need all your junk." If you have anything, take it to Christina. And the kids, like I had a parent today, tell me that she took a little video of her daughter showing all the art projects she's made already. So she was very proud of her art projects. So I'm proud of us Gilbert for doing that. And that's the highlights of Blue Hill.
So one of the things that I think about every month when I get ready to present is, how can I let you guys see the things that take place that maybe aren't always pushed out front through a camera or through social media and just capture some of the moments that you might not get to see? And that's what I've tried to do, I think that's what we all try to do, is to give you a glimpse inside the building. So what we have here is quite a combination of photographs that show you what things have been like at middle school these first few weeks. At the top left, we have the volleyball girls heading off to their first away game. And that's something they wanted to celebrate. At the top right is a day in Mrs. Kanek's classroom. She was working on towers and talking about structures and foundations and balance and weight distribution. And the kids were having a good time getting into that. At the bottom right was our first teacher. At the bottom right was our first teacher training day and we had the backdrop down there in the pack, of course. So as many of our guys that could fit got in there for a quick photo. And at the bottom left is the backdrop again, but this time at Open House. And some of our kids took advantage of that. In the center is one of our first fundraising days of the year. And teachers could wear a hat or they could wear pajamas or they could pay double and wear both. And here we have a fine example of each of those. Mr. Draper, of course, had to go all out. But we're just so thankful that our teachers jump in and participate when we have things like that. So what's new at SGMS this year? On the far left is Suzie. I don't know how many of you have met Suzie yet. Suzie hangs out in the hallway all the time. She is a new addition to the faculty, but very cost-effective on pay and benefits. She is a creation of Amy Meyer, who wanted to demonstrate to students how attainable certain career paths are. So we started off with Health Professions. This week Suzie is up in the hallway and is an automotive welder with the full getup and periodically we'll change her out. And there's a little information card that tells students about the career, about what it takes to get there. And so hopefully we're sparking some interest in some kids and hopefully speaking to somebody's interest along the way. In the center is a picture that was sent to me out of excitement from Mr. Justin Roth, who went up to St. Louis and was given by the Clavius Project, and I'll tell you about that in a second. Six new computers, four new robots and an obstacle course. Justin got us hooked up with the Clavius Project, which is a project mainly in St. Louis funded by private donors and a grant from Rankin that helps put money into schools specifically for things like robotics and coding. And Justin found out about it, started a conversation with a gentleman named Jeff, who is that program director. And Jeff said, let me come down and talk to you guys because on paper, it doesn't quite capture what we do. So he came down and visited with us and said, this is super simple. I have money to give away. We want to get out of St. Louis, start booting out a little bit. We want to get out of the private schools and into the public schools a little bit more. And we think you guys are a great candidate for it. Here's what we can do for you. Here's what we can supply you with. And we want to invite you to these competitions. We want to invite you to the jamboree. We want to get you hooked up with other schools that are doing the same thing because we think this is important technology that these kids are going to need in the future. And it really is that wholesome. It really is that simple. It really is that great a program. So a few weeks ago, they called Justin and said, hey, it's pickup time, come up. And before Justin made it all the way back home, he's taken a picture of the loop and sent me a picture. He was so excited about that. And I give a lot of credit, all the credit really, to Justin Roth for hooking us into that program. And the kids are very excited, very excited. And it's, you know, especially nice when they can get their hands on good, useful, state-of-the-art equipment. And we do a great job with that gear at St. Jen. But if we have a benefactor that's willing to do that for us, we're going to take advantage of it. And that's what the Clavius Project is. On the far right, Cheer is back. That's new at SGMS and we're so thankful for that. We're thankful to those ladies who have sponsored it and the kids that turned out to be a part of that team. And we do have a new dragon costume on the way. We were able to meet a need that the Cheer sponsors expressed. The dragon that we have right now, I think, is 12 or 13 years old and has seen better days. And they were able to find a new version of the exact same model. So the dragon will look as it always has, but a little fresher, a little cleaner, a little more up to the job of spreading spirit. I'm overwhelmed by this list of positive office referrals. And it's a lot of the same things that Jerry and Lori talked about. Just great student behavior, being a friend to those in need, cleaning up when you're not asked to, all kinds of different things here. And because there were so many, you guys know I like to put the pictures with them, but because there were so many, I couldn't fit them all on there, but I also couldn't resist sharing this picture with you so that you could see Justin Harris there on the far left. And if you don't know Justin, trust me, that's him. That's just him. That perfectly sums up who Justin is. But we're so proud of these guys and also thankful to the teachers who take the time to recognize these things. You know, it's so easy sometimes to get caught up on the negative side of things and we got to deal with this kid, we got to do. Truth is, we've got to deal with these guys too. And we're so thankful for that. Our Spotlight Award winner for this month is Mr. Roth, for some of the very reasons that I told you about a few minutes ago. Justin has also changed departments and is taking on that challenge very gracefully, very skillfully. In fact, I think it's built a little excitement in him. He's got some spark and some energy and he's really getting after it. And people are noticing, the students are noticing, the teachers are noticing. Most of the comments that you see here are directly from the teachers, but in the nominations, teachers were also quoting the things that students were saying about Mr. Roth, that they have noticed about him this year. And as you guys know, he's just a very hard worker, upstanding young man, great role model for our kids. And so we're so thankful that we could extend that award to him. Kristin and I, as your NJHS sponsors, held induction this weekend. We had 31 new inductees and 18 returning members. And one thing that we wanted to do this year was to generate a new script for that ceremony that would put the students more out front than us. So that's what we did. And our officers especially took the lead in going through all of the motions, through the candle lighting ceremony, through announcing the inductees, and just really did an excellent job. And I feel really good about what we were able to do there in making sure that the students got out front on that. Down at the bottom left, you see Ms. Tina Hook. She was named the staff member of honor for 2019 and 2020. And on the bottom right, Mrs. Rachel Hayne, who was named the teacher of honor for 2019 and 2020. And again, just congratulations to those guys who were inducted and congratulations to those students who helped pull off a really very nice ceremony. Thanks, guys.
When we go to our school where we're classified here, they had a group down there that had the robotics. And we all thought, well, we wish we could get that. And I know our kids would be excited to have that. It was just amazing.
We're getting there.
Yes.
We're getting there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
No, you're fine. I will say, Dr. Mercer, Suzie creeped me out last night.
She creeped everybody out.
We had the cross trencher kids in the hallway and I looked over and was just running by and I thought somebody was in the building at like 4:30, 4:45. And I was like, oh, that's a little strange. And then I looked and it wasn't, it was, it was a little creepy. With that being said, on the topic of Suzie, I want to put a plug in for our College and Career Fair that we have in the high school. We've always had a college fair that we've done for a number of years, but we actually are revamping that and also including businesses in that. So Bailey's going to hand out some awesome flyers that she actually created for the event and they look fantastic. And actually, one of our models in one of the flyers is sitting back here as well. So you guys can take a look at that. One of the things I do want to put a plug in for any businesses that are interested in getting involved, it is October 16th from 6:00 to 7:30. And they can contact Lawyer Roth in the high school guidance office if they're interested in getting involved with that College and Career Night. All right. So in the high school, we have several different things that we have going on right now. So I want to start with Leo. One of the things, and I'll talk about this, Mr. Hayne and myself have offered kind of a shout out. And so we got this information through our shout out and I'll explain what the shout out is here in a few minutes. But Mrs. Fritchy Dunsey does an amazing job with our Ag students. And they had their SEMO fair, I think it was last week, and Leo had an opportunity to go down to the SEMO fair. And I saw this as Mr. Hayne was putting it together, first place in the tractor rodeo. And so I'm like, I have no idea what tractor rodeo is. I had no clue. So I called Leo in today at the end of the day and I said, all right, Leo, you've got to tell me what tractor rodeo is. I said, because I have something that's running through my mind where you're on a tractor and you're trying to wrangle some, you know, some hogs or some cattle or something like that. And so he walked me through exactly what took place. And basically you hook up a trailer to the tractor and that actually is his tractor behind him. And he pulls it through an obstacle course. He said it's got a figure eight that's in the obstacle course and they have certain cones that they have set up and you get points deducted if you hit the cones and that sort of thing. And he finished actually first out of more than 40 other competitors. And he had no idea when I called him into the office today, number one, when he was there, you called the assistant principal's office and he's already a little uneasy. But as he walked in and we started talking about this, he actually had no idea that there were 40 other competitors. So he was just really excited about that. When he was sitting in his chair and when I told him that he wasn't in trouble, he scooted back a little bit more in his chair. And then when I told him that I was just calling in to get some information because he's doing an awesome job, he scooted even further back in his chair and gained a little more confidence. So it was really cool. Mrs. Fritchy Dunsey, like I said, does an amazing job with our Ag students. We held the first ever class presidential debates for each of our freshman, sophomore, junior and senior classes. And this was last week on Thursday and Friday. And Mr. Hayne and myself, this information came to us out of the principal advisory group that Mr. Hayne created and started last year. And the students came to him at our very last meeting that we had and they said, hey, it would be really cool if we gave students a voice and gave them a platform and an opportunity to be able to share their viewpoints and their ideas leading into class elections, to turn it away from, it's still going to be a popularity contest, but to at least give them a voice. And so we created this idea. We made it happen on Thursday and Friday last week. We actually held three of the four out of the pack. And it was an amazing opportunity for these kids. They had an opportunity to be able to get up on stage and share their insight. They had a minute to answer an opening statement and then they answered fielded questions that were provided for us by our faculty and staff at the high school. And then they also got a minute for closing remarks. And I will be honest with you, the kids did an amazing job with this. It was really cool to see some of the students that walked out on stage. And I personally think, and Mr. Hayne agrees, that this probably turned the election for a couple of kids. A couple of the kids that walked out on the stage that probably didn't necessarily have a chance to win just in a straight popularity vote actually came out on top. So it was really neat. Our freshman class president is Aiden Trauncher, sophomore, Thomas Elder, junior Sydney Eisenbeis and the senior is Jaden Leclair. And I got to moderate, so that was pretty cool. Just going over briefly the reclassified data, and I really want to point out, you guys can see our trend here from the last three years where we are at reclassified numbers. You do see our freshman number did go up just a tiny bit, but from where it was at three years ago, we're very, very pleased. And out of those 11th grade reclassified that should be seniors that were reclassified as juniors, we feel very confident that both of them have a track and a path to be able to get to graduation. As a matter of fact, Mr. Hayne and myself were talking about this earlier. One of the individuals that is that two number actually has been talking to us about college and junior college options. And we both feel like he will be very successful in that situation. So it's really, really awesome to see those numbers continuing to decrease, but not only decreasing, even those students that were reclassified still having an opportunity to be able to get to that next level. So we feel very, 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 very pleased with those numbers. So our weekly shout outs. This is something that we started in the high school at the beginning of the year. And we simply asked teachers just to highlight a student, a faculty member, a kid, and actually we just said, highlight someone. And we didn't know where it was going to go. And so most of them have been centered around kids, but you can see we even have Mrs. Uzell down there in the bottom. Teachers have even taken the opportunity to highlight some of their peers, some of their coworkers. And it's been a really neat opportunity for Mr. Hayne and myself to be able to see some of these things roll in. Sometimes it's as simple as, you know, they're doing an amazing job in the classroom. And sometimes it's, I mean, we get a huge, long paragraph about what these amazing kids are doing. It's been really awesome for us. We've been able to pick up the phone. I actually got off the phone with a parent earlier this evening, talking to them about their kid and how we've seen this huge change with them, but how they're the first one to actually get two shout outs. And the parent got off the phone and she was crying. Just hasn't had that positive reinforcement at home. And so it's been very powerful for us. It's given us an opportunity when we're out and about to be able to have those conversations with kids, with parents and be able to have those positive interactions because we don't always know these things are going on in the classroom. And we can see it, we can pat the kids on the back, we can notify the parents and let them know that their kids are doing amazing work. So the teachers have been doing a great job with this and we've been able to get some really, really good insight of how amazing our kids are at the high school. So Mr. Hayne just pointed out a few individuals that have had some of the shout outs. Some of the teachers have been doing some unconventional things. That's actually Mrs. Bader's class. In the middle, they were doing an activity in one of her business classes and they just got out in the comments and were doing something different. And she really enjoyed that, so she wanted to, she took a picture and she shouted that out for the week. So it's been a lot of fun. It's been really neat for us to be able to see these kids kind of in a different light and have some different conversations. And then finally, with the shout out, this is the last piece that came with that. And one of the things that our yearbook staff did is they took an opportunity to be able to get in and create a video. And I want to share that video with you guys because I think that you will understand how this is starting to transcend for us in the high school. And so I do want to get in and play that really for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for making me feel safe.
Thank you for preparing me for college.
Thank you for dedicating all your time to us to make sure we have a bright future.
Thank you for being there for me when nobody else was through the tough times.
Thank you for supporting me.
We love you.
So these kids kind of are starting to find out that their teachers are shouting out to them. And these guys wanted to take the opportunity to shout out to their teachers. And we thought that that was really cool and how it's transcending beyond what we had any idea. All we asked the teachers for was a simple email to notify us of great things that are happening and it's transcending even with our kids. And that's been really, really neat. So, and that's it. Thank you very much.
I just want to thank you guys for all that. And I'm taking the assumption here that Bailey's involved also, but there's so much good that happened that we hear about it. Of course, we're exposed to it, but a lot more of it is out there on social media now. I get compliments in the grocery store, so that's a good thing because I don't always get compliments in the grocery store.
Okay. And then the last item on my report, in the packet, you have summaries of tornado, fire and earthquakes. And that's the conclusion of the report of this year presented. Thank you.
Next, we have unfinished books.
Yes. First, I'm going to talk about bus routes for the 2019-20 school year. We did receive the bus routes from Father Bus and so this year I put them in a binder. And we will keep these in Carrie's staff, Carrie Fox's office, district office. So if you want to see those, I have those tonight. With the maps, we always get a letter from Mike Jokers, the general manager at Father Bus. We have a total of 31 routes that we run to and from school every day. And this includes our early childhood special education bus, which runs an AM and a PM route. It does not include the bus that we send to Perryville. But there were four route changes this year, as you see. One route, we had a decrease of six miles and the other three increased miles with the PM, early childhood special education route increasing the most to 32 miles. And it's just the location of where the children live. So they don't ride the bus every day, so we don't run those 32 miles every day, but on the days that they do, we have to. So I was kind of curious, so I called Buck, Mike back after I got the information and I said, how many total miles do we travel to and from school a day? And it's approximately 2,211. So I was just amazed. I knew it was a big number, but I didn't realize it was that many miles in one day. So yes, we have a very large county to cover and Father Bus does that very well. So these are the bus routes for this school year. My recommendation to you is that we approve that for past presentation.
I'll move to approve the bus routes for the 2019-20 school year as presented. Second.
I have a motion and a couple of seconds, all in favor. The opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the instructional program presentation.
I'm going to start. Jessica's handing out something. I thought it would be good to start by figuring out what guides us into what we do teach the kids. And I feel like Jessica and I are teaching no matter what we do, whether we're pulling two kids in and having them work out of conflict, whether we're talking to staff or whatever we're doing, I feel like we're always teaching. And we do get pulled in many different directions, but on this side that looks like this, this is the American School Counselor Association. And this kind of talks about the mindsets that all counselors should have at the top. And then at the bottom... And then at the bottom, it breaks it down into all the components of the job that we do, not just teaching in the classroom. So I really wanted to take this moment to kind of educate people, and if you have time, kind of look through it and think kindly of us and all the things that we try to accomplish in a day. On the backside is the Missouri School Counselor Association. And one of the things I wanted to bring up too is that Missouri is one of the best states in the nation for school counseling. Noren Geisbers is considered the father of school counseling, and he lived at Mizzou, and he wrote many books, and he guides many different states on how to implement a great school counseling program. So this here is what guides what we teach, and it's basically personal and social development, academic, and careers. But Jessica and I talked, and the personal and social's really taken over the last couple of years. So we were like, what is it that we do teach? You know, like, we teach everything from pre-K to fifth grade. We usually get in how many lessons a year and try to cover all different kinds of things. I would love to hear your feedback, because we have to stay relevant to what's going on now, so that's kind of talked about in there. So if you ever have any ideas and things you think we need to cover, let us know. But we just thought we'd ask the kids and jog our memory. So we kind of looked at everything and asked a few kids what it is that we've taught them. So there's a video up there.
Hello, Nate. Tell me some things you liked learning in counseling last year.
Last year in counseling, I liked learning how you taught me strategies for the math test and how you taught me to stay longer in the math test and to get a good night's sleep and have a good breakfast in the morning. The good night's sleep is so you can remember as much as possible, so you're not tired during the test. The good breakfast in the morning or the good lunch, if you're taking it after lunch, is that way you're not on your stomach if you're taking the test.
Awesome.
Okay, one, two, three.
What did you like about the bakery?
I greeted people into it.
Yeah, and what did you like most about the bakery?
I got to get a feed on it for myself.
Yeah.
I pulled a security guard to make sure nobody's, everybody's safe. I love, and the people loved their food.
I was a creator, and the reason I loved my job because I get to clean people when people come in.
In counseling, I learned a growth mindset, and a growth mindset, when you say you can't do it, but then you can do it, you just can't do it yet.
In counseling, I love when Miss Roland brings out cute, because it's a fun way to learn.
Wait, everything behind you just like feel good.
I like meditation, because it relaxes, it calms me.
And it's all about bad days, stuff I thought about bad day out of my head.
Google side projects are basically, you can add them any way you want. It helps feel creativity, and they also, you can design whatever you want, basically. So I did this All About Me project in counseling, and so basically, it was kind of really fun, because I got basically to create everything and tell about how like my life is.
All right, tell me one of your favorite lessons that we do in counseling.
One of my favorite lessons is when you teach us that we can be happy, sad, or mad sometimes.
Hi, Madeline. What do you think is one of the most important lessons that we had in counseling?
I'd have to say bullying. I thought that was like the most useful, because it helped me and it helped other kids, I hope, think that if they're getting bullied or someone else is getting bullied, stand up for yourself, stand up for others.
Okay, tell me what your favorite lesson is in counseling.
Being a good friend and helping others and doing a lot of stuff, and know bullying others when they're doing stuff.
Okay, girls, these are some sixth graders. What did you guys like best about elementary counseling?
Mixer.
And what'd you like about the mixer?
I liked this guy.
Yeah, I liked to be good friends.
And did you guys make some new Bloomsdale friends?
Yeah, yes.
All right, awesome. Lincoln, tell me what you love about counseling.
Being a bucket filler.
And how are you a bucket filler?
By helping somebody win the heart or giving somebody a hug would be nice.
And don't be a bucket dipper.
Okay, so the next thing that I'm going to talk about is our career day. We're going to do something a little different this year that we're real excited about. In the past, what we've done is had fourth and fifth grade students go into the pack, and we've had presenters come and talk to the students about their job. And then last year, Amy and I kind of thought, you know, let's try to get the kids out into the community and see some of the businesses firsthand. So at first, it felt a little overwhelming, like, how are we going to do this? But we just started this year that we thought, let's get fifth grade out there and just see how that works. I had a little bit higher numbers, so I was a little bit more nervous how I was going to do this. But it ended up, any business I called, they were like, yep, we want to bring them, and let's do this. And so for the elementary, our day is October 16th, and we're going to do two hours at the hospital. They wanted them as long as they could have them. They're going to get to suture a banana, they get to see an ultrasound, they get to play with the heart model, they like really have a cool day planned, warm planned for them. And then we will kind of split into two groups. They're going to also go to the community center, they're going to get to see the new water park, they're going to learn what it's like to be a lifeguard, they're going to get to go into the library, talk to the librarian, just all the different jobs, kind of just in that business area. And then they're also going to go out to La Wasp, and they get to wear the hard hat and glasses, and they get to go down to the loading dock area, they get to go to the burning area and just really kind of get to see what it's like, you know, in that business area. So mine's kind of three big business areas, and then you're doing yours October 1st. And how many are businesses?
I was able with lesser numbers, I have 16 businesses. But they're small. They couldn't, so Lori's letting me take the two aides, and I'm taking a group, and the three fifth grade teachers are taking a group. So there's about 10 kids in a group that are going to go into smaller businesses. That's what our businesses are. But in the afternoon, 30 kids are going out to Holson, and 30 are going to Basin Farms, which is kind of a bigger place where they can handle more, and it'll be after lunch. Our PTO is going to play for lunch in the middle room, a nacho bar for them. But, you know, really, every business from like Bloomsdale Excavating all the way up to Anheuser Animal Clinic, we're going, we're going. So the kids got to choose their first choice, and I put them in a group. And one thing I like about it is that, and when I was at the middle school, I kind of did this too, is everybody kind of sees something different, so there's kind of like a mystery, you know, like, oh, you got to see that. So hopefully, when they come back to school, they'll start a dialogue about, oh, this was really cool, and I did this, and all that kind of stuff, so.
And then we talked, we were like, wouldn't it be cool, then if we could switch days with the kids?
Yeah.
It's impossible, but.
Maybe down the road.
Yeah.
Well.
Hopefully maybe then we can add.
So St. John's kids could come to Bloomsdale, and then Bloomsdale kids come to St. John's and kind of do the same thing.
But our PTO is for the buses too, so.
You guys have questions?
All right.
Next, we have a new business, assessment plan and updated testing schedule.
Yeah, before we get started on the assessment plan, I failed to mention Jordan Bueller and Dave Apt in the lunch we had at last PD day. It was fantastic, most convenient of the ingredients, and we have a variety of desserts, cheesecake. So that was a hit last year. We pulled them up again. I think we're just going to pull them in and have them do it all, because they're really good cooks. And then normally in September, we would be discussing the emergency operations plan, the updates, and then the building emergency plans. As we got into looking at that, it needed to be updated badly. So I started in on it. My expertise is limited, so I went to Bailey Auto, and I went to Christie Clark and Stephanie Gag and Gina Lidle, and each of them have their expertise sections in that plan. Christie Clark has been talking to me about getting together with the emergency management personnel in the city annually and setting up an annual meeting. I thought this was the perfect time to do that, so we're going to postpone the emergency operations plan, and then any changes in the building plans that may happen as a result of that. We're going to meet with all of our emergency personnel in town, have them look at it, get their input, talk about what their roles are during an emergency, and then hopefully we'll be able to bring that to you next month, okay? The assessment plan, I updated bits and pieces. Kate, if you want, it should be in our packet. I'm going to go through it briefly. There's a lot of information. It's lengthy, so I'm just going to go through each section and talk about briefly any changes that are in the sections. Part one is the introduction, that's on page three. Part two is testing and student achievement, that's on page four. I did add, I had a note from last year to update this in the rationale in compliance report policy IL-1, which is new, and it's also in part four of this plan. All enrolled students will be required to participate in all aspects of the district assessment program, including state tests. Missouri has no policy that would allow students to opt out of assessments. In some states, they have an opt-out provision. We don't have that, so we expect all of our students to take our assessments. So I added that in section two. And then if you will turn to page six, this is kind of the meat of the assessment plan, because it details what assessments we give outside of in-class, summative, informative assessments. So it's extensive, and it goes through each grade level detailing what tests we give outside of normal classroom tests. That did not change that much this year. I basically updated the dates for testing windows. I think I may have gotten rid of the STAR test, as I touch base with building-level counselors and administrators, they tell me what they're no longer doing and what they are doing. So I'm going to look through that. Section three, guidelines for including students with special needs, that stayed the same. Section four is on page 13, professional development related to student assessment. And as I was going through this, it made me a great idea for professional development in the future and writing good test questions that'll get us to that level three, level four, rather than being more regurgitation of material and give them to the actual in-depth thinking about the material. So I've added that to my list of future professional development regarding question writing and probably subject-specific as well. Section five is teaching test-taking strategies, which everybody does. Section six is our new policy that was adopted, IL-1, the assessment program. And if you look at the participation, that's where it says all students will take the assessments that we give in the district. Page 23 has the test integrity and security policy, policy IL-8, and I just put that in there for reference. And then page 27, part eight, put the students to do well on state and district tests. Took quite a few days to get through all that and get all that updated and to gather all that information, but I think it's a solid assessment plan. I would like to go in and, you know, put in all the formative and summative assessments that all the teachers do, but that document would be a question.
Dr. Taylor, was the work keys in there last year, or is that new this year?
No, I believe that was in there last year.
That's good.
I'm going to approve the assessment plan and update the testing schedule.
Second. And a motion in second, all in favor? And you post? Motion carries. Next, we have action for closed meeting.
I move that the Board of Education, over a closed meeting with a closed record, a closed vote following the regular open meeting from September 17, 2019, to be held at the RW Thomas Library, 715 Washington Street, St. John, Missouri, for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items and business. Hiring, firing, dislearning, or demoting of employees, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals existing or proposed security system, destructive plans, or district property. I approve the notice of this meeting and the ten and pretend to be posted as required by law.
Second.
Can you, October, right?
October 15.
15, is it, John?
I think so.
With that correct, on October 15, 2019. Okay. Motion, my term, Daniel O'Connell, second, Mayor Bowser, roll call. Eric Bowser?
Yes.
David Bowser?
Yes.
Tony Hook?
Yes.
Jim Carrey, chairman?
Yes.
Terry McGann, yes. Martha Reese, here?
Yes.
Richard Rudolph?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven oh.
I'll move to a closed session with a closed record and a closed vote after short break.
Motion in second, all in favor? And opposed? Motion carries.